I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners back to order for this afternoon's February the 9th regular meeting. I'll start out with item 13, which is Public Works. And it is ordinance, well, I'll read it here from the script. It's setting, or second reading in public hearing for ordinance number 1317 on the matter of amending the Rural Comprehensive Plan to redesignate land from agricultural to marginal land and rezoning that land from exclusive farm use E40 to marginal land MLSR with the site review and adopting savings and severability clauses, file number 509 PA12-05208, property map 18-02-29, tax lot 3508, owner Margaret Iverson, Iverson Living Trust applicant, Representative Bill Close. I'll start out, keep going through the script? Or Deanna, do you want to?
I can give the staff report if you wish.
Okay. All right.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. The item before you today is the Plan Amendment Zone Change Request from Exclusive Farm Use to Marginal Land Zone. The supporting documentation in your packet includes an Agenda Cover Memo, a draft ordinance, existing and proposed zoning and plan maps, findings in support of the application with an analysis of the complete set of criteria, the applicant's application, planning commission meeting minutes, and several other attachments as listed in staff's ACM. The applicant's property is just south of the rural community of Pleasant Hill and Highway 58. The subject property is an approximate 85-acre flag lot accessed off of private access easement Sunny Hill Lane and Highway 58 under ODOT jurisdiction. The Lane County Planning Commission recommended approval of the request in an eight-to-zero vote. They followed suit with staff's recommendation to add a site review suffix, limiting the property to four dwellings. The site review suffix was driven by the applicant basing his findings off of GO5 big game analysis with the assumption of four total dwellings being built on a subject property should this application gain approval. The applicant has agreed with the site review suffix, which is included in the title of this item. The Lane County Planning Commission also recommended a condition requiring the applicant to record a farm and forest management agreement prior to board review. This was based off a comment received from an adjacent property owner concerning the need to protect their farm operation. The farm and forest management agreement was received and was forwarded to you today in a supplemental memo. The decision of the board must be based on approval criteria and the record. The criteria include the marginal lands ORS law, Lane County Plan Amendment and Zone Change Criteria, Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan, partial GO5 economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis, and the statewide planning goals. Both the ACM and staff findings speak to all the criteria. So just a little bit about the marginal lands designation. The marginal land zone classification is governed by the 1991 version of the ORS, and Lane County is one of two counties in the state to have adopted the marginal land zoning designation. Lands that are designated as marginal lands are considered a subset of resource lands but are allowed at smaller tracts in which dwellings are permitted use pursuant to Lane Code 16.214. In 1997, the Lane County Board of Commissioners issued a supplement to marginal lands information sheet for further policy guidance. Essentially, qualification for marginal lands designation is a twofold test. Any proposal must comply with the income test and a parcelization test or a productivity test. The applicant shows to do the income test and the productivity test for this application. As for the income test, the statute states the marginal land was not managed as part of a farm operation that produced $20,000 or a forest operation capable of producing $10,000 in annual gross income. Attachment nine forwarded to you today attests to the farm income standard in the affidavit, and the professional forester report attests to the forest income standard being met. As for the productivity test, the marginal land must be composed predominantly of soils class five through eight and is not capable of producing 25 cubic feet of a merchantable timber per acre per year. According to the NRCS soil data, the then 122-acre property contained approximately 74% class two through four soils. As such, the applicant hired a professional soil scientist to conduct an on-the-ground soil survey. The soil scientist concluded in the text of the report on page five, "The makeup of the marginal land is 73.7% and 26.3% class two through four soils." The applicant's forester concluded in his analysis, "The property is incapable of producing 25 cubic feet per acre of merchantable tree species." Again, the full set of criteria is addressed in the findings of support of the application. Staff and the planning director agree with the applicant's marginal land analysis and believes the application meets approval criteria and recommends approval of the application. The Lane County Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Staff is available for questions should they arise. The supplemental materials include a memo dated February 8th, and then we got an email at 12:00 from Sean Malone from Land Watch Lane County that was directly sent to you. So you should have those supplemental items. I have a copy of the email from Sean Malone if you don't, and if you would like an extra So this concludes my staff report of this time. I'm happy to answer questions throughout the hearing should they arise.
Questions? Question, Bozovich?
So I have a question about the SR suffix on this. How does having a site review limit the ability to develop anything more than four parcels or dwellings? Is that part of what site review does? Or is it having that designation somehow or another say that there's a limit of parcels? Because I understand that a marginal lands, the normal would be 10-acre parcels, which would be up to eight on this property. So how does the site review work? Is it something in the site review statute that makes that limit? Or is it something in agreeing to the site review? How's that trigger?
So the site review is going to be indicated on the zoning map with hatch marks. So it's going to trigger our review as planners once somebody comes in for development to know, oh, that has site review on it. So they go to the ordinance to find out, what was that specific reason why we attached the site review to it? And so it's explained in the ordinance on a case-by-case basis, why, what was the reasoning behind that?
So it's actually in the language of the ordinance that we adopt?
Yes.
That will attach that restriction to no more than four parcels and dwellings?
Correct. Because you are right, in the marginal land zone, you could essentially have up to, for this property, eight dwellings or eight parcels on this land. There's two situations where that could occur. One is if all of the properties around that subject property were zoned residential, then they can go down to 10 acres. That's not the case here. Or if all of the land surrounding it qualified for marginal lands. So that means all those lands would have to go through a marginal lands application in order for, and gain approval in order for that to go down to 10-acre parcels.
So in addition, does the site review also allow, the designation allow for review of how those parcels are laid out relative to maybe protecting the portion of the parcel that's peripheral big game? Or is that part of the site review? Is it just purely about limiting to four parcels?
Yeah, that hasn't been entertained yet about how they should configure the parcels. Normally, that's up to their professional surveyor in them. It's not part of the site review suffix right now.
Okay, thank you. Question, Thorson?
I noticed that Mr. Malone's letter dated February 9 asked to have the record left open. What's your position on that?
Well, I think that I apparently received an email from the applicant's attorney, which I was not able to view yet, and I think that the applicant might speak to that today about whether or not they want the record held open. I haven't reviewed this email. I've read over it, but I haven't reviewed it in detail. So I don't know if I have an answer yet.
The first thing is, he says he wants, he says, "Request to leave record open." And then he has a paragraph that's devoted to that topic, and he says, "Land Watch Lane County requests that the record be left open for 14 days to allow the public to respond to new evidence submitted by the applicant." Now, the other question I wanted to ask about was in the peripheral big game range, and he says, "The EC analysis makes conclusory allegations as to why the property should not be considered peripheral big game area." What is your view on that? Is this a peripheral big game area?
Yes, I believe that it's impacted and peripheral big game habitat. I don't think it contains major big game. I'd have to look at the map, and it's an attachment in the packet.
I just looked at it, it doesn't.
Doesn't have major, yes. So I don't understand that sentence. It does contain peripheral big game. I think 35 acres.
So it's, apparently the Fish and Wildlife Department recommended one residence for every 40 acres within the peripheral big game range. And so this conflicts with that recommendation. Is that accurate?
If that's what...
It's on page three of the letter. About the middle of the page, it's the sentence that begins with, "There is simply no support for such an allegation, especially when the expert agency recommends one residence for every 40 acres in peripheral big game range."
I'd have to look into what ODF did conclude about the overall residential density and get back with you on that. Because I'm not sure about his allegations either.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I guess the only question I had, Mr. Ratt, was that there was two items that were submitted after the planning commission. It was Mr. Sesko's report, and then it was an additional soils report. Is that correct?
Correct.
But it looks like the planning commission made a unanimous decision without those items. Correct?
Yes.
And so the reason to supplement the record with those two items was?
So the sequence of events that occurred was another staff member brought this to the planning commission in October of 2014, and that staff member had since retired, so I took over the file. When I done, when I did the review on it, I saw that the research area for the farm and the soil and the forest reports was for configuration of the property that was less than the amount needed. So that analysis was approximately 85 acres, and what needed to be done on was 122 plus or minus acres of analysis, because the analysis is done on the subject property for a specific time period, I think 1978 to 1982. So it's the configuration of the property during that time for the marginal lands analysis. So they went back and redid their reports, but they came up with the same conclusions as meeting the criteria. It was just a different configuration of the analysis, of the property for the analysis.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, so there is a required hearing with this, and I'll go through the process to do that. So the rules of the hearing, "This decision is subject to Plan Amendment and other criteria cited in the Agenda Cover Memo and attachments. Evidence and testimony must be directed toward the approval criteria, and failure to raise an issue to enable a response may preclude appeal to Luba." So this is the opportunity for those presentants to enter information into the record. Only persons who qualify as party may appeal the board's decision to Luba. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any board members with ex parte contact?
No.
No.
None of us? All right. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing, and we will have the applicant's testimony. Do we have the applicant here? Yeah, come forward, and if you would, for the record, please state your name.
I'm Jordan Iverson, successor to the applicant. It was my father, Boyd Iverson, who has been involved, and he's passed away recently. Really, I'm just here to say that I am in agreement with the staff report. I wasn't sure, though, on the last second email that came in at 12:00, we did have a response to that about keeping the record open from my attorney, that it was sent to Deanna, but maybe too late, it was at 12:30. So I wasn't sure if I should read that email or forward that to make it record.
Actually, it would probably be good if you went ahead and read it. Then we'd understand the response.
So this is from Bill Close. He said that he's looked at the Land Watch letter from attorney Sean Malone, asking to keep the record open for 14 days. He said that this is obviously a judgment call for the county board, but the applicant does not support keeping this record open. It has been open for about seven years. There's no legal obligation to keep the record open, and Land Watch did not cite one. The statute people usually lean on is ORS 197.763 Sub 6, which only applies to the initial evidentiary hearing. The planning commission held the initial hearing. ORS 197.763 Sub 6 says, "Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The local hearings authority shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing pursuant to Paragraph B of the subsection, or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony pursuant to Paragraph C of this subsection." Again, the applicant realizes this is a judgment call for the board. Bill did say, "I will be happy to supply, or happy to help amend the findings and ESE to address any issues raised by Land Watch now or in the open record period."
Is that all the comments you have?
No other comments.
All right. Appreciate you reading that, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of the application? How about testimony from other, any other individuals? Yes, that would be, against, come forward, please.
Well, if you have any question whether it's a big game area or not, there's elk on it, there's bear on it, there's deer on it, so...
Can you state your name?
Herb McKellup, I'm a landowner next to it. And I guess we'd just like to back up a little bit and look at how this all come about. You know, we had a measure that we voted on, that a family property, if they wanted to divide it up, and I don't remember what year that was, and save a couple parcels for siblings or children, ended up being a scam measure. They repealed that, come up with a new one. It was my understanding, they had to be so far along in that project for the second major to take effect, which Iversons weren't, but somehow they still divided up this property. Then they come back and appealed and got a chunk of ground approved, apparently for four more lots. Now they're trying to peel it again. So my concern is, as a landowner next to it, that, you know, are we going to have 6,000-foot subdivision lots on this property? So I guess I look at it from a standpoint of a neighbor that bought property there 30 years ago from Iversons with this farmland that was not developable. They have developed it to the point, I guess it's, went through the voting process, went through appeal, and now they're appealing it again. So what's the limit that this appeal process can go through? That's my concern.
Thank you. May I have staff address that?
So this application before us today is a Plan Amendment Zone Change to change the 85-acre property from farm to marginal lands. It's presumably done so that they could divide the property into 20 or 10-acre parcels. I think what the property owner is speaking to is what's called the Measure 49 land partition. And that's how these, this property was created today in a 2011 land partition based off a Measure 49 claim, which created three parcels. Two smaller pieces to the north and the larger remnant, 85-acre piece in the end. And that's included in Attachment 8, the partition from 2011. Does that answer the question?
So, Mr. McKellup, did you get to hear that response? It sounds like in 2011, they perfected their Measure 49 claim into three parcels, leaving this 85-acre parcel. And this process here is rezoning that 85-acre parcel from ag land to marginal lands, which would, under the conditions and criteria that they're agreeing to, limit it to 20-acre parcels for 20-acre parcels.
Okay, I do understand that, but it's originally an 80-acre, and they appealed that and got it approved, and now they're appealing it again to get it approved.
An appeal?
Yep. If you could, Mr. McKellup, could you come back to the mic and make that statement for the record?
Well, I understand what you're talking about, but it was originally an 80-acre parcel, and they appealed that and got it approved. And now they're appealing it again to get it approved, and the eight more parcels. And what's to say that that can't be appealed into one-acre parcels? The Iverson family's intent is just to make money on it, okay?
Yep, but I'm not...
From a voter's standpoint, that was divided into three parcels, two smaller ones and an 80-acre. Now, from a neighbor, I don't understand how that was ever appealable, but it was, and you guys approved it. Now they're appealing it again.
Yeah, maybe it's just the language that you're using. I'm not following this, there is no appeals here. It's my understanding, the parent property was 122 acres to start with.
Correct.
They went through their Measure 49 claim, which created three parcels.
That's right.
Which left this 85-acre. There's no appeal of the 85-acre, there's no appeal of that process.
Well, the 85-acre now is approved for three dwellings, is that not correct?
Not at the present time. Present time, it's an 85-acre chunk that they're wanting to rezone to marginal land.
Now, we received a notice that 85-acre parcel had been approved for three or four building sites.
It's being recommended for four building sites, four 20-acre parcels.
Okay. But the Iversons are appealing that?
No, we're in the process of approving it, not appealing it.
Okay, what's the eight lots we're talking about?
The eight lots were brought up, I think, because under marginal land, marginal land can allow down to 10-acre parcels. So if you were to do 10-acre parcels, they could do eight lots. This application is saying, no, we're going to limit it to 20-acre parcels and just four of them instead of the eight 10-acre parcels.
Well, I guess if I back up, then, my understanding was that that was already approved, the four parcels.
No, the planning commission has recommended it. We are in the potentially approval process today, if we make a decision today. So there's, at this point, it's not a...
Okay.
Yeah. We're still going through the approval process.
The Zone Change has a two-step process, the planning commission...
My understanding is that was done and approved, and then that was being appealed.
No.
Okay.
The planning commission recommended it to us. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any further staff comments?
None.
What about applicant rebuttal? Jordan, do you have anything you want to add? So before I close, any other comments? So at this time, do we need to discuss the record? Have a motion to close the hearing? Or is this...
It sounds like you want to close the hearing, so you need a motion order to do that, and then you can discuss whether to leave the record open or not.
Okay.
There's a motion to do that.
So I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0 with Commissioner Farr excused. So now we'll go to discussion. I think we need to first discuss, do we want to leave the record open or not?
If I might, I think, sure, you can choose to have that discussion now or at the end of your discussion about the demands.
But eventually, we'll have to make a determination on the record. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Bozovich?
Thank you. So, you know, this is some of the tangled stuff we go through in Oregon land use law, and I know Measure 49 was very confusing to a lot of voters. Measure 36 that did pass originally gave rights back to people who lost those land rights and had continual ownership since Senate Bill 100 passed. And the intent was to honor people's desire to use their property as when they purchased it. And Measure 49 allowed for some of those claims to continue on had they vested enough rights in it. Apparently, it appears that the Iversons did, in fact, go through enough vesting that they got approval of the Measure 49 claim, of which I think there were only a handful that actually got approved in Lane County, including one next door to my property, a partition there. What then is also allowed under Oregon law and the fact that we're one of the two counties that approves marginal land is to make an application to have land declared marginal and rezoned as marginal land, as a completely separate process. And it's something that even the adjacent property owners have the right to do, if they so wish, if they can meet the criteria for proving it's marginal land, which our planning commission has already ruled that this particular application meets those criteria and voted to approve the application unanimously. So that's, now this has come to us for our decision as to agreeing, is it marginal land or not? And what does it meet the criteria to be considered marginal land? And thus, once it's marginal land, there's a second process they have to go through to actually subdivide it. But it's not even eligible for subdivision if it's not declared marginal land first. So there'll be another process coming up, just to warn you, if we approve this one. Even if we don't approve it, then the appeals could actually start. And if we do approve it, the appeals could actually start also, so it's not the end of the line, and it's going to seem like typical land use, there's going to be process, process, process. Ultimately, though, if we approve this and set a limit of four parcels, there is not any eligibility to subdivide those in future in our current comprehensive plan or under Oregon law. They will go on as far as they can go with this property. So you're not going to see one-acre lots or 6,500-acre lots due to the fact that we approve these four, the possibility to come back and do four 20-acre lots by rezoning the land to marginal. So I just want to try and clarify that process, if that was perfectly unclear. You have to almost have a master's degree in planning to understand Oregon land use law, if not a doctorate. So I think one of the, the only questions I have about the application, it looks like, in reviewing the process, I understand the need to go back and show the 122-acre parcel because that was the actual parcel record during the time period for the marginal land review. So that's why we got the new reports based on that, but they matched the old reports that were for the 85-acre parcel, that they met the criteria. The only thing that seems to be a little bit under discussion, at least from the new email we received from Land Watch, is do they have a problem with their E.C. analysis relative to big game? And it seems to me that, at least when I read through it, there seems to be a little bit of a mismatch in language between Land Watch's letter and the actual E.C. analysis. They keep talking about major big game designations where there weren't any really on the property. So I'm not quite sure I follow Land Watch's analysis as I read through their letter and go back and forth between that and the E.C. My only thing is wondering if it's possible, at this point, to add anything into the site review relative to trying to minimize impact, this kind of a slice of this parcel. It's kind of a long bowling alley, and the southern and eastern corner of it has that peripheral big game designation. If there's a way of minimizing fencing and parcelization of that portion of the parcel and trying to keeping the dwelling sites on the northern end of the parcel, and maybe, you know, trying to keep those two mostly as open or pasture, whatever they end up being, I can guarantee most big game ignores pasture fencing. Just try and put a tomato plant out at my house that isn't protected. They pretty much ignore fences. But so, I don't know if that's an issue, because it'd be something we'd be adding post Planning Commission, and whether it would require you guys to come back with a revised ordinance. But that would be my only thing that might make this a little bit better approval in the site review, is if we could add a requirement to at least show they're minimizing the impact to the higher classification of big game in the southeast corner versus the rest of the property in the north end of the property, and trying to put most of the impact of the parcelization and new dwellings in that area. Is that a possibility legally at this point, or is that going to cause us to have to kick it all the way back to planning?
No, I think it's possible, yes. I guess if that's the board's desire, I think we obviously want the applicant or the representatives to weigh in on what's possible, if that would help or not.
Yeah.
With respect to their E.C. analysis.
That's kind of my only, everything else seems to be in order as far as qualifying under the marginal lands criteria. So do we want to ask the applicant whether that's an issue for them to add that, or I may not even be, I may be the only board member that shares that desire to maybe add that condition, so.
Yeah, and that may be, and obviously the other board members can speak to that. I suspect that the applicant is not in a position to weigh in on that yet now, because the attorney's not here, but probably more to the point, they would want to consult somebody with respect to, I guess, A, legal arguments from the attorney about whether the E.C. analysis needs any help for buttressing in that regard, and if it does, whether, what you suggest would assist that or not.
True. And they may want to talk to their engineers and surveyors about whether that's going to mess up a future partitioning. Might be a good reason to keep the record open.
Yeah, and I would suggest that the first level of analysis is whether that's required to have a good E.C. analysis. If it's not required but preferred by the board, it's probably going to be tough to require it. So, and we'll let the attorney speak to that.
True. Thanks for that clarification I hadn't quite thought about. Yeah, if the E.C. was good enough for the Planning Commission, us throwing an extra thing on there might lend to an appeal by the applicant, so.
Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, question I have, so the Planning Commission, it was 8-0, it was unanimous on this. So, I mean, that's pretty strong commitment on this. I'm going to guess, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth here, but I guess the question I have, first of all, Andy, is that if somebody, so if we vote the affirmative today, if somebody wants to appeal, where's this appeal to?
Goes to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
That's what I thought, so Luba. So, I'm going to guess, and again, I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but if we were to approve this today, there's a potential that Land Watch may appeal this anyway to Luba, and then they would have to, then, based on the decision. So maybe some of those questions that, especially on the issue of big game, could be answered at the Land Use Board of Appeals, or any other criteria that was discussed here, or the Planning Commission could potentially be answered there as well. Is that maybe a correct assumption?
As far as I can tell now, at least what I've seen in the record, the appealable issues in opposition would seem to be the sufficiency of the E.C. analysis.
Yeah.
And Luba would essentially answer yes or no as to whether the record was sufficient to sustain that criterion or not. And I, and I think they could make that judgment based on the record as it stands now, but probably would maybe be in a little better position to do that if the applicant and opponents were given a couple of weeks to put into the records some things, something they think is necessary. And that, I think, would be a fairly complete record, allowing Luba to make a call on that issue.
I just believe that, you know, we're asked to look at it, we have a criteria we're asked to look at this. And, you know, I've been, I've looked at a lot of land use issues over the years, whether city or even here at the county, and you have to look at it from a specific criteria, and that's what we're looking at. And I think the Planning Commission vetted this out pretty well, and they came back with an 8-0 approval. At this point in time, based on what I have in front of me, and the information, and I would agree with Commissioner Bozovich, there was a lot of reading here, but, you know, as best that I can understand it and what was before us, I think that the, I'm comfortable about, at least from, this is step one. And, by the way, I just asked Commissioner Stewart, but maybe you can answer this question. So there's two counties that, so what's the other county? Do you know?
Yes, I believe it's Washington County.
Okay, yep. Okay, so it's two counties in the state.
And I, for point of clarification, I don't think Washington County actually takes on rezoning as marginal lands. They did whatever they needed to do back 20 or 30 years ago to allow it, but I don't think they do it.
You know, I'm actually, I'd see at this point in time no reason to add additional, I might, and again, I go back to the fact, I think based on the letter we received from Land Watch, there's probably a real possibility this is going to get appealed to Luba. And if there's, if Luba feels like there's some changes that need to be made here, it'll be remanded back, and then we would have to go through some of this process again. But based on where we are today, the information that we have today, I'm actually comfortable about moving forward. And so that, so yes, I mean, if the board wants to keep the record open for additional, what, 14 days, where the case may be, I mean, I'm not going to argue with that. And if there's added information that the board wants to add into this before, I mean, I'm not going to argue with that. But I, I'm just basing it on my own personal assessment where we are today. So I look forward to the comments from Commissioner Sorenson and Chair Stewart. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion that we extend the record for 14 days.
Not seeing a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Bozovich?
So, listening to Commissioner Liken and thinking about the fact that we need to be careful about throwing in requirements without making sure that they're well-seated in the actual need to pass the marginal lands criteria, I'm a little bit now reluctant maybe to start trying to wordsmith out a site review requirement around big game, knowing that that E.C. is probably going to get looked at again, if anything, and if it's already gone past the Planning Commission on a unanimous vote, and supporting that E.C. And I, when I was looking at it, I didn't really have the same issues, going back and forth over lunchtime with the letter from Land Watch and the actual E.C. document, I wasn't quite following their logic and how they felt it was insufficient. So I was just trying to see if I could do something that would help. But I understand sometimes that I have to be careful about doing that, have to have a statutory reason for asking for something to be done. And I probably was just kind of trying to aid the application to be stronger without a real statutory backing up of that. So I'll kind of withdraw that suggestion. And with that, then I'm looking at, why would the record need to be kept open? And I'm not seeing a real reason, you know, most of the documentation was well-vetted already. The supplemental documentation was just a repeat of prior documentation that has been in and around for a while and available to anybody that would be an opponent. So I'm not really supporting keeping the record open. I think we can probably go ahead and get to a decision today and not have to hold the record open for additional information.
Do we have a motion then? Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll move approval of ordinance number 1317 in the matter of amending the rural comprehensive plan to redesignate land from agricultural to marginal land and rezoning that land from exclusive farm use, E40 to marginal land, MLSR with the site review, and adopting savings and severability clauses. Do you want to read the file?
Okay. Should we have a second?
Does that need to mention closing the record? Or is approving this?
Nope. Yeah, I think we did, sorry. Yeah, we do need to close the record. We had a motion to keep it open, which failed for one of a second, but we haven't formally closed the record yet. We've closed the hearing.
And then I'll add to, close the record.
Second. All right. Further discussion?
I'd just make the statements that, you know, reading the document and everything, I have to agree that Planning Commission has not many of these that we get moved forward of zone changes that receiving unanimous, Planning Commission recommendation. And I don't believe any of the new information, as was stated, changes any of the documentation, and I'm not compelled by the, you know, this is another one of those components, okay, we've got one party that agrees with the E.C. agreement and went through our scrutiny, and we have another party that disagrees. So I think, you know, I'm supportive of, this application's been in the works for, what'd you say, seven years? How many?
Five, four years probably at least, huh? Five?
It's been in the planning department since 2012.
Since '12? Yeah, so it'd be nice to move this forward. Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. The purpose of today's hearing was to hear evidence and testimony from the public, either via oral testimony, such as we heard today, or by written testimony. And so, one of the drawbacks of the board's decision not to keep the record open, in my judgment, is that the testimony that comes in today is testimony that we have to be considering. And one of the items of testimony that we received was the letter from Sean Malone and Land Watch, Lane County. And in that letter, there's a number of facts that are presented, and true, if we had response from either the county staff or from the applicant to refute that, we might come to a different conclusion than having the information in the record that, in my judgment, the hearing officials, such as we, are going to be taking that information and putting in there. And that, of course, goes to the issue of whether or not there is appropriate analysis of the big game issues that are involved in this application. So the letter, that's part of the record that's unrefuted by anyone, says essentially there are big game issues, and they weren't addressed appropriately. We had testimony today from a nearby landowner attesting to the presence of big game in the area. I don't think the analysis addressed the issues, nor do I think there was any response from the applicant to refute it, and therefore I think that the record shows that the analysis wasn't sufficient, didn't go over what we need to determine whether the big game habitat has been affected more or less than what the Land Watch, Lane County letter says, and so therefore reached the opposite conclusion that the matter should be denied, or that we should have an opportunity to have people contradict it, but that isn't happening because the board's turning off the opportunity for that information to be presented.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Bozovich?
So, I spent most of my lunch hour with the Land Watch letter, and going back and forth between that and the E.C. You know, one of the things, first things the Land Watch letter purports is that the site review doesn't really limit them to four parcels, and says that marginal lands actually allow eight parcels. And that's part of how they're getting to the fact that they're not meeting the big game requirements. And we've heard from staff that the site review will specifically, because it's in the ordinance, that it's because we only want four parcels, that's all they ever get. So just for starters, that's part of the, you know, my analysis of the testimony to date, which is this letter. And I've had time to read that letter and analyze that letter. And a further portion of it, it says that the analysis concedes that there are three classifications of big game range occur on the property, yet when I look at the actual E.C. analysis, it only shows two. So, you know, there's obviously either the Land Watch folks prepared this in a hurry and weren't careful about it, or they failed to quite understand the data that was being presented. So, you know, I have, feel like we've had plenty of time, and Land Watch had plenty of time, if they wanted this to be considered more, they could have gotten their letter in sooner and maybe done a better job of reviewing the application, so they didn't contain errors in the actual letter they submitted an hour and a half before the final public hearing, which we scheduled two weeks ago. So, you know, I've had my time to review the evidence and hear the evidence. I don't feel there's a need to keep the record open, and I feel I'm ready to make a decision on the zone change today.
Other comments? Have you seen them? Mr. Akoff, do you want to call the roll?
Call the roll. Voting in this matter, Commissioner Bozovich?
Aye. Commissioner Liken?
Aye.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Chair Stewart?
Aye. It passes 3 to 1 with Commissioner Farr excused. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So our next item is actually a 3 o'clock time certain. My bad, as an agenda team, usually these items are...
My bad, as an agenda team, usually these items are generally full of public testimony and land zoning, or land changes. So, with that, I guess we will recess until three o'clock.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. We have, I believe, one more item to conclude today. It's Item 14, Health and Human Services. It's in the matter of considering proposed Board Order 16-02-09-09 regarding a protest and award of a contract for community crisis center services. As required by Chapter 20 of the Lane Manual, the Board of County Commissioners is the local contract review board for Lane County and must make a determination on any protest of award of a contract in excess of $100,000. The Board has the authority to affirm, reverse, or revise the award, or may send the matter back to the Department for further action. The process established in the bid document provides the following. First, the Board will hear from county staff regarding the nature of the contract and award. Second, the protesting proposer, Whitebird, will have up to 10 minutes to present on its reasons why the Board should not make the award. Third, Columbia Care, the selected proposer, may, if it wishes, have up to 10 minutes to present reasons why the contract should be awarded as recommended. The Board must then consider and either affirm, reverse, or revise the award, or send the matter back to the Department for further action. By the terms of the protest submitted, in order to reverse the Department's decision and award the contract to the protester, the Board must find that the Department either, number one, used different criteria to review each proposal, two, used criteria that did not pertain to the products or services requested, or three, that the highest-ranked proposal was non-responsive. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Alicia Hayes, our Department Director for the staff proposal, or presentation.
Chair Stewart and Commissioners, good afternoon, and thank you for taking the time to hear this RFP reward protest this afternoon. Commissioner Stewart has outlined the process for the item, so I'll start with the staff portion. I'll do that by asking Jim Chaney from County Council to outline for you the parameters of the protest and what you'll be considering today. Then I'll ask Debbie Heasel, HNHS's Senior Programs Service Coordinator, to outline the RFP process and what was used to award the contract. So, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. Chair Stewart, Commissioners, I'll be very brief. The one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that Oregon law provides two protest stages for requests for proposal. The first is, when we issue a request for proposal, there's a period of time where we're required to allow any vendor that doesn't agree with the terms or thinks that they're unfair or any other manner to protest. And there's a process much like this one to protest the terms of the RFP. No vendor did protest that. We allowed a seven-day period for that, which is more than the law requires. And there were no protests of the terms of the RFP. So, the protest that's in front of you today, as Chair Stewart outlined, was strictly on whether the county applied the scoring criteria that were contained in the proposal, you know, that were contained in the RFP, whether those were applied correctly in determining the award.
Debbie?
Lane County Health and Human Services conducted an RFP process for a community crisis center. We released the RFP. We allowed time for protests of specifications. We received proposals from two organizations, from Columbia Care and from Whitebird. Both proposals were scored by a screening committee made up of Trillium Behavioral Health staff, Trillium staff, City of Eugene police, county staff, and representative from the Mental Health Advisory Committee, bringing the community's voice to the table. So, they reviewed the proposals. They used the scoring sheets that were contained in the proposal, which outlined the scoring criteria to score both proposals. And at the end of that process, Columbia Care had the highest score and is the recommendation of the committee that Columbia Care be awarded the contract. We received the protest from Whitebird, who was the non-selective provider. Their protest is that differing criteria were used to evaluate different proposals, criteria being used to evaluate proposals do not pertain to the services being requested, and that all higher-ranking proposals were non-responsive. A copy of that protest was included in your packet.
Also in your packet, you'll see we answered each of the requests or concerns that Whitebird put forward. So, that's our very brief overview, and we'd like to now provide the 10 minutes, give our time for the 10 minutes for Whitebird and then 10 minutes for Columbia Care.
Are there any questions of the staff before we hear from Whitebird? Okay. At this time, I'd like the representative from Whitebird to come forward. If you might just state your name, then I'll start the timer, so I'll stop it in between switching people or however you plan to do it, but try to keep you close to 10 minutes if possible.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Gerard, and I'm the Coordinator of Whitebird Clinic. I know we haven't been here in a while causing a fuss, but this was too important for us not to come and speak to. I want to acknowledge that we made some mistakes in our proposal and later in our protest document for reasons that are not important right now, but believe this issue is important enough to still speak to it. Unfortunately, we did not receive the Board's order, which included the county staff responses and our first look at Columbia Care's response to our protest until yesterday. Nevertheless, here we are. We mean no disrespect to the county and Trillium staff who formulated the RFP, nor the reviewers of the proposals, nor the county staff who made the recommendations, all of whom we've worked well with and collaboratively with over many years. We also mean no disrespect to Columbia Care, with whom we've only had a little bit of an opportunity to work directly with. Our concerns do not reflect just our agency's perspective, but the thinking and planning over quite a few months from a number of leaders of 10 to 20 agencies in the community for the creation of a model to enhance the current crisis system. And we just can't fathom what led to a plan that diminishes the values implicit in that proposal. I apologize, but due to health issues, I'm passing the rest of Whitebird's presentation to Benjamin Brubaker, who's part of the admin support team and one of our cahoots crisis workers, and to Mark Mason, who's a crisis worker in both crisis and cahoots. And also, this is Heather Lofton, our financial coordinator, in case you have additional questions regarding our analysis of the budget. Thank you.
Good afternoon. To begin, I need to be clear about one point. This protest is about our strong belief that the decision does not represent the best approach to enhanced crisis services in Lane County. It will not be the best for our clients and optimum service delivery. It will cost more money from an already overburdened system, and it will confuse some of our most vulnerable community members, as noted by the consumer advocate from Lila and her public comments this morning. The background is that the SPMI work group was formed as a collaborative effort to identify and address local community behavioral health needs. The key recommendations were a community crisis center, more peer-supported respite services, and a return of a crisis respite program. The crisis center was to have a couple of 23-hour chill spaces for clients who needed further monitoring or a safe spot to wait until services opened the next day and facilitate warm handoffs, and it was to create a single hub for crisis triage and continuity of care. Our reasoning: Whitebird Clinic prides itself on serving this community has for over 45 years, and we do not enter this protest lightly. But we believe this protest is in the interest of tens of thousands of clients we serve each year and to the public interest at large. At stake is a potential savings of over $399,000 annually to the local community that can be reallocated to other important and necessary services. Additionally, if our budget was more accurately represented in our proposal, our project would cost 49% less annually than the one submitted by Columbia Care. It was with this intention that Whitebird Clinic decided to engage the county in this process. We have limited time and will not speak to each item in the protest, but only those that we feel present the most present, clear case for the Commissioners. We do have to disagree with a few points of the county Health and Human Services findings and their response. One, Columbia Care has a much higher budget, and this was not represented by the Health and Human Services response on Page 1 of the Board's order, which stated we both had an $829,000 budget. Actually, our budget is $416,000 ongoing, and the other proposal is for $815,000 ongoing. We also want to point out that we do not just use crisis trainees, volunteers, as the main staff on the crisis line, as was pointed out in the budget area. Our proposal actually stated that Whitebird Clinic will also have extra volunteers and trainees on many shifts for triage, peer support, and/or crisis working. We have longstanding, extensive training programs for all our in-house QMHA-able crisis staff, and we have at least one QMHP on the crisis team and other licensed and credentialed staff that back up and help supervise our work. Substance of the protest: Protest Process D, Number 2, Different Criteria Used for Different Proposals. Our protest is this: What is a community crisis center, anyway? The individuals creating this concept, drafting the RFP, and scoring it seem to all have very different interpretations, as did those preparing the proposals. But we believe the intention of the SPMI work group and the actual RFP was not a 23-hour respite center. It was for a fully-integrated community crisis center. This is a different criteria that we are proposing, the criteria we spoke about in the protest. We believe that some reviewers were scoring for a walk-in crisis hub and others a short-stay rise respite center.
According to Part D, Number 9 of the protest process, we protest that Columbia Care was nonresponsive. In the first question of the RFP, agencies were asked to describe their history of dealing with acute mental illness. Columbia Care responds with a list of crisis respite services they've been offering across the state. Indeed, the majority of their services are accessed by clients who have already been screened or have been recommended by other agencies, not those that are brought in directly by police, family, friends, or on a walk-in basis. It is our contention that the first question sets the stage for the rest of the proposal. If it is perceived that an agency has relative experience in dealing with acute entry-level crisis, the remainder of the proposal will be seen through a very specific lens. We strongly believe that the high scores received by Columbia Care are related to an incorrect assumption that they had experience in managing entry-level acute crises. All scores from the review committee awarded Columbia Care either a nine or 10 out of 10 points for this specific section. Regarding our protest on this point, neither the county or Columbia Care addressed our concerns on this issue. Columbia Care did not refute our claim that a lack of relative experience, and the county did not mention our protest point or state why this point would be irrelevant. Columbia Care's expertise in crisis respite and lockdown is established by their history. They did not speak to experience related to dealing with entrance-level crisis management or de-escalation. Whitebird Clinic strongly believes Columbia Care's lack of experience in dealing with unscreened individuals in the initial throes of a mental health crisis will affect our local emergency response system, and it will result in mark holes for EPD, EMS, and cahoots. Also, according to Part D, Number 9 of the protest process, we protest that Columbia Care was nonresponsive. Respondents were asked to discuss linkages, sorry, linkages that they have with other public service crisis agencies. Columbia Care presents no clear plan to work in conjunction with other crisis services. Also, they don't discuss any current linkages that they already have with said agencies. The response to this section only includes a vague reference to an already, quote, "existing safety fabric," unquote, that has been previously established in our community for individuals who are experiencing mental illness. Whitebird not only lists decades of experience in working with community agencies, but also specifies methods used to continue and to increase communication among agencies, which will further improve the coordination of care. Whitebird lists various feedback loops and meetings that have already been established with several other local agencies. We strongly believe that Columbia Care failed to provide an appropriate response to this important part of the RFP.
And finally, in public interest, we want to look at the budget closer. Our original budget proposal of roughly $753,000 in ongoing costs included our current funding for crisis services of $290,000, almost $291,000, and the annual agency contribution of $46,000, and therefore requested additional funding of $416,000 compared to the Columbia Care budget proposal of $815,000. This represents a cost savings in the amount of $399,000 annually. As cited in our budget narrative, the original four-month startup costs proposed by Whitebird are $223,000. This represents an estimated $100,000 for renovation of the proposed location, for which there will be no substantial ongoing facility costs. The building is already owned by Whitebird Clinic and is just one and a half blocks from the county's primary mental health emergency department, one that we often refer to and refers to us. As the committed stewards of the local public resources, please consider the annual projected cost savings of over $399,000 annually to create a comprehensive community crisis center with all county crisis services at a single location. We believe that Columbia Care is equally intelligent, compassionate, and witty, as shown by their proposal and their sharp responses to our protest. And we are sure that Columbia Care is quite competent in respite and lockdown services they provide across the state. However, this project is neither of those. If we could agree that our shared priorities are to do what's best for our clients and our community, provide optimum service delivery, be cost-effective, and not waste money from an already overburdened system, and reduce rather than increase confusion for some of our most vulnerable community members, then we urge you to overturn the reviewers' recommendation or at least withdraw the RFP and start again, because we strongly believe it's in the public interest to do so. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Alicia? Okay. All right, so at this time, the next Columbia?
So, at this time, we would ask Columbia Care if they have want to present, or did you want to do questions?
No. Then the opportunity to respond. I agree.
Please.
I believe that's the process.
cost savings of over $399,000 annually to create a comprehensive community crisis center with all county crisis services at a single location. We believe that Columbia Care is equally intelligent, compassionate, and witty, as shown by their proposal and their sharp responses to our protest. And we are sure that Columbia Care is quite competent in respite and lockdown services they provide across the state. However, this project is neither of those. If we could agree that our shared priorities are to do what's best for our clients and our community, provide optimum service delivery, be cost-effective, and not waste money from an already overburdened system, and reduce rather than increase confusion for some of our most vulnerable community members, then we urge you to overturn the reviewers' recommendation or at least withdraw the RFP and start again, because we strongly believe it's in the public interest to do so. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Elliot? Okay. All right, so at this time, the next Columbia?
So at this time, we would ask Columbia Care if they have wanted to present, or did you want to do questions?
No. Then the opportunity to respond. I agree.
Please.
I believe that's the process.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Sawitzky. I am here on behalf of Columbia Care Services, and I have Dr. Gary McConaughey, who is our clinical director, here with me as well. This will be very brief. First of all, just thank you for this opportunity to come and stand up for our proposal and for the contract award. We are a mental health agency that's a nonprofit. We've been operating since 2003. We feel very privileged to be a current Lane County provider, operating three different programs in Lane County. We also feel very privileged to be working collaboratively with all of the community partners here, and absolutely Whitebird Cahoots is one of those. We submitted a response to the appeal, and I believe that sort of stands for itself in addition to the recommendation of the staff, as well as the score from the review committee. But I will just go ahead and reiterate it and summarize it, and that is that, you know, we can't exactly speak to the planning process, except to say that we have every confidence that this body of professionals from the community identified the need as they saw it, and we absolutely believe in the model that they came up with to address it. We responded to what we believe is a very clear RFP. The specifications therein were clear on what the program model was to look like, and it's something that Columbia Care could provide with top-quality services. I guess, just speaking to the budget, I'm not going to go into numbers, I'm not our financial director, but they're very clearly spelled out in our proposal, and we believe that budget supports those top-quality services that have a very good reputation for maintaining in a community. They are based on what we believe that will cost to operate, as well as that high level of staffing and the staffing credentials that we feel will deliver the highest quality services to the citizens and their individuals that we're serving. As far as our experience, I don't know if Gary wanted to come up and talk to anything. Okay, so we do provide crisis services, crisis stabilization and assessment in all of our programs, and one of, I think, the things that we're very good at is being responsive to the individual needs of the consumers that we're serving, as well as what the community is looking for. So we submitted our proposal, we think it's a very good one, and we believe in it strongly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that...
So at this time, we want to just answer some of the questions, but we prefer to do that. I was going to ask Jim Chaney just to, again, talk about or kind of put those sideboards around what we are here to look at today in terms of the criteria.
Chair Stewart, Commissioners, I think that, actually, Chair Stewart, you summarize these very well. This was, what the board must rule on is on the protest of the evaluation of the proposal, and again, on whether different criteria were used to review each, that the criteria that were used didn't pertain to the products or services requested, or that the highest-ranked proposal was non-responsive. Making a finding on that, then, again, you have the opportunity to affirm, reverse, modify, or send the matter back to the department for other consideration with direction. Any action that you take must be done by a board order. There is a draft board order, I think, in the packet for award than any other determination that you make. You'll have to craft in such a way that it can be an order of the board.
Thank you, Jim. The reason I ask for that is, there was a lot of information presented, but we're going to try to stay to those points of which you are making your judgment today. So Debbie?
Really, there were three points that, three criteria that the appeal is based on from Whitebird. I think there's a belief by Whitebird that the project that we went out for is not what they believe the community needs, and that's outside of this process. The RFP was written, differing criteria were not used to evaluate differing proposals. There is a score sheet in the packet, it was very clear to everyone exactly what those criteria were going to be. Each screening committee member was sent copies of the proposals and the score sheets, and scored the proposals using the same criteria for both proposals. The question that the criteria used to evaluate the proposals did not pertain to the services or products requested. The service requested was a community crisis center with 20, up to 23-hour care. So the questions pertained to that service, and the criteria is directly taken from the questions that were asked, so the criteria does meet those. And I'm looking for the questions such as, does staffing appear sufficient to be able to staff for a 24-hour period? Are clients linked to community services? Do they talk about crisis assessment and stabilization? Is it a safe place for clients? So the questions that were asked and the criteria that were used pertain to operation of a 23-hour crisis center. The other criteria that the proposal, that the protest is based on is that the Columbia Care proposal was non-responsive. ORS 279B says, "A responsive proposal is a proposal that substantially complies with the bid request." Both proposals substantially complied with the bid request. They answered the questions that were asked, they submitted the documents that were requested, so both proposals met that. Columbia Care was not non-responsive.
Yeah.
Do you have questions for us? Please let us know.
Questions? Commissioner Storson?
I have a question about the responsiveness of the bids. You just mentioned that both proposals were substantially responsive. Is it within the board's power, since both proposals were substantially responsive, to award the contract to Whitebird?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Chaney on that.
If we, yes, if the department has found the proposal to be responsive, then yes, that would be within the board's power.
Okay. And I know that the committee, the RFP screening committee recommended Columbia Care Services be awarded the contract, but I'm unclear about the board's authority to go around that recommendation and award it to Whitebird. So based upon their representation that both proposals meet the substantially qualified bid or substantially qualified application, you're saying, Mr. Chaney, that that's within the power of the board, then?
Yes, Commissioner Storson. If the board finds that different criteria were used, or that the criteria that were used didn't pertain, or that the highest-ranked proposal were non-responsive, if you found they were both responsive, if you agreed with the staff that they were both responsive, then you'd either have to find that different criteria had been used, and essentially you'd be revising or adjusting the criteria, you'd be finding that different criteria were used, and had they been used the same criteria, then the other proposer would have been awarded, or that there were some irrelevant criteria, and if you, once you discard those criteria, then you would be finding that it should be awarded to the protesting, to Whitebird, who have issued the protest. Without those findings, then that award could not be made.
Okay, and then, this is a question for either Ms. Heasel or the silent one. Could you...
That's my job.
I always think about this when I come to board meetings. If I had $800,000, how would I go about spending it? And I guess the answer would be, I would do it very carefully. I'm sure you have done that, but it sounds like there's been a communication issue here between either the department and Columbia Care, or the department and Whitebird. Can you address why there is this communication issue, at least that's been raised by Whitebird? We thought it was X, and you were very clear. We made an effort to put the criteria out there, bidders knew it, you know, and yet, on a common sense level, and I realize government contracting may not always fit into that, but I'm thinking, wow, I would really want to make sure that they knew what I wanted if I was going to spend $800,000. So could you just address that concern?
Yes, I can, Commissioner, I can give that a try. I'm going to put Lisa on notice, she may be asked to come up. Our community got together when we, we have huge need in our services to people with mental health issues, and so you have to, you go with that first. So there's this huge need, and we looked at what we could do with this amount of money. We had community meetings, we had this discussion, we made, there were options, and then a plan was made for the crisis center. So we couldn't do it all, this is what we decided to do. It fits in with, you may know or may not know that we're working with the state on folks that are at the state hospital on 370 holds. This is a big part of our plan, that our quick two-week turnaround to deal with that. But this respite care is a big part of that. So I think, from my perspective, and Lisa, if you want to come up and share, we had options, we narrowed the options, we went out for that, we had opportunities in terms of FAQs, frequently asked questions, to gain knowledge about this RFP. So I fear the communication, the issue may have been before the RFP was even presented, not with the process of the RFP, but with what is best for our community. But that's just my opinion. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Yes, Alicia is correct in the fact that I think that miscommunication occurred upfront. So as Mr. Brubaker referenced, I apologize if I didn't get your name right, we had a SPMI subcommittee that met and spent several months looking at what the needs of our community are in relation to crisis services for individuals with mental illness. We have an array of service needs, we have a gap in those type of services currently, and there are a number of things that we need to implement to have a full continuum of care in that realm. Unfortunately, we do not have the funding currently to support that full continuum. We just don't have sufficient finances to put all of those pieces in place at this time. So we chose to start with the Community Crisis Center and use that as a building block to have a foundation for crisis services and continue to build as we move forward in the future.
So just to be clear, then, I don't believe there was an issue with miscommunication once the RFP was issued and that process. That has been clear, there's been opportunities, like I said, I believe we had at least two...
We had two frequently asked questions.
Two frequently asked questions for clarification on the RFP, but certainly I cannot argue that our community needs more support around this issue.
Yeah? Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the, a quick question I have, and I heard this, is that about the organizations that are bidding on this, one of the criteria, is it safe for clients? Is there any part of the criteria that says, is it safe for neighbors?
No. We looked at client safety, we didn't ask, we did not ask either of the proposers about neighborhood safety.
Isn't it true that either organization, they do not have to notify neighbors that they will be coming in?
So do you have an answer to that?
It's my understanding that in Springfield, not a neighbor knew that Columbia Care came in. They were not notified by the state, they were not notified by anybody. That's why I asked that question, as far as the, while I appreciate, and I think it's important to make sure it's safe for clients, but I also believe that there needs to be some sort of criteria involved. Now, if that's not included in this, then there's really nothing we can do about it. But I'm just going to highly suggest that that's a question we need to ask the state when things, when house, homes, organizations like this are being proposed. I think that should be part of it, and it was my understanding that City Hall was not aware that Columbia Care was coming into Springfield either, until after the fact. And so I think that's just, I don't think it necessarily pertains to this. I do believe, though, it's something that, that question should be asked for the future proposals, but not necessarily here. I think that the challenge here is just looking through, looking through the scoring, looking through the criteria that was provided. I don't necessarily see anything improper that was done in the scoring. You know, if it were me, and it was just, and it was based on just a personal opinion, and being with our relationship over the years with Whitebird, it'd probably be a simple, simple for me, from a personal standpoint. But if it's based on the criteria that's been asked for you to score on, I don't believe that there was any, there wasn't necessarily harm done to Whitebird, and that Columbia Care seemed to have scored, and have seemed to do everything they've been asked to do to provide. So, I mean, I'll be curious and interested here from my colleagues here on this. It's always very challenging, and I appreciate Whitebird actually willing to step up and protest, feeling like, wait a minute, can we take a look at this again? But I, you know, I went through this, and I, it'd be pretty difficult to overturn that. But I will be, I mean, I'm interested, and I will say this, they scored pretty close. It's not like it was some sort of landslide one way or another. I mean, it was a close, it was very close. And I, from that perspective, I think Whitebird should feel good about the fact that they, it's obviously an excellent organization, one I've been familiar with for many, many years. You know, serving as mayor and now as a county commissioner, so they're an outstanding organization. What I'm looking here is just the criteria, the scoring that was put forth. So it's kind of, it'll be difficult to say, you know, we just overturned that. Again, I've got to take my own personal opinion out of it. Darn it. But nothing against Columbia Care. It's just really what it is, is familiar, being familiar with an organization. So I look forward to my colleagues' comments as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bozovic?
So I have a question here. I'm looking at the materials that were provided, and there's a copy of the request proposal, and within that, it's got, you know, all the various things that you have to submit, you know, this section can't be more than 12 pages and all that stuff. In addition to that, as the Part Four, Part Six, sorry, Criteria for Evaluation of Proposals, and it goes through Management Qualification Section, the point scoring and all that, has several questions there. Finishes up on page 24, and then the next page is the Community Crisis Center score sheet that's blank, but it doesn't have a page number on that. Was that part of the Request for Proposals document? So the actual score sheet was provided at the time the proposals were requested?
Yes, it was.
Okay, that's a critical question, because one of the questions, one of the contentions is, kind of, that question number one didn't quite dwell into the right thing. And I guess, you know, I spent a good portion of my career either proposing to public agencies when I was working in the consulting side of engineering, or reviewing proposals from consultants when I was in the public sector side. And quite a bit of it was in the state of Oregon, so I'm fairly familiar with the state of Oregon's public contracting laws, and the need to protest the language in a proposal document prior to bid versus objecting to how it's worded post-bid, and stemming your protest based on that. And there are, you know, there were opportunities to make that protest of specifications or protest of the proposal documents prior to bid. There's always, by Oregon Public Contracting Law and our council described that, that was available. So we're looking at now, afterwards, having to decide... So we're looking at now afterwards, having to decide, were these various things, you know, that, you know, that you're bringing up, that you're allowed to bring up under ORS as a non-successful bidder to protest an award post that? One of the things you can't deal with is, what were the services being requested? What were the criteria that, you know, was going to be evaluated on because that review before? So now we're looking at just afterwards. It's difficult for me, looking at this, to say, we use different criteria to review the proposals. You know, it's difficult for me to say that the criteria didn't pertain to the services we requested, you know. And then it's really difficult for me to look at these and say that the higher-ranked proposal, even though it was minimally higher-ranked, wasn't responsive. You know, and so for me, as I look at this, probably where the, where it would have, you know, and this is an educational thing for the folks at, at Whitebird, the time to make your, you know, your stance that really there should have been more weight placed in, on location and ability to connect to community services and this, you know, all the things that you've brought up, and that I think are, you know, valid points, was pre-proposal protest, and requesting for change in, in the proposal language, not post-in-a-bid-award protest. They're two different processes. And it's really kind of, you know, once you've let that pre-proposal protest period go, you really have to bid exactly on what the documents were requesting. And then any protest post-award have to be based on exactly what those documents requested. So I, you know, with that in mind, I'm, I'm having difficulty getting to the point where I can overturn without knowing that we're going to be hearing from the lawyers at Columbia Care shortly for upholding a protest without sufficient findings to do so. It's an unfortunate situation to be in, and I, you know, I appreciate the concerns that you've brought forward, and that, and your, your concerns, I think, and I believe, you know, Columbia Care's also got the same concerns, is just trying to provide the best service to this vulnerable population of our community. And you guys have such a great history of doing that, so it's hard for me just to, you know, this is when it gets hard to be a commissioner. It's kind of with land use decisions and several other decisions that we make, it has to be based on the law and, and the criteria set forth in the law. We can't let other things come in and cloud that criteria. We had a decision earlier this afternoon on a zoning case. The only thing we can look at is what's the criteria in the law for that particular zoning decision. We can't look at anything else. And similarly, this, where I am right now, is I'm looking at what's the criteria under Oregon Public, Public Contracting Law to uphold a protest and award of a contract for services, and I'm not seeing the ability to get there with what's been presented, unfortunately. So it may be, you know, also a lesson learned in our side of the table of maybe doing a little bit better job of trying to get to the services that best serve and all. But again, it's also a problem of trying to just do what we think we can get done, and add, and we know what the whole apple looks like, that we want to, we set up for services, but we can only afford a slice of it, and how we describe, and which is the first slice we take, sometimes there's not always agreement on that. So maybe a little bit better communication before we even put the proposal out would have, would have helped some of this. So that's kind of where I am. I'm kind of at a point where I don't see a sufficient finding that we could make to overturn the, the award at this time.
Further comments?
I guess I'll kind of chime in here. You know, in the 11 years I've been a commissioner, I've gotten to know Whitebird's services, and how, you know, they do a great job in our community with the folks that they serve, and have found ways to step up and help us when we were reducing our resources, and, you know. So I, I understand that. As was stated here before, this is, I think, in my 11 years, the second time I've been through a protest. The first time on this board, this other time was a protest on the Metro Wastewater Board, and we were, we had an item in that document that we asked for a bid proposal on that nobody could acquire, so we were able to take the document and send it back out for a bid. In this case, the criteria that we have and the information we have before us, I too am struggling to see where there might have been a reason to, in my mind, to say that different criteria was used to review the proposal. I don't see that. I don't see where the criteria did not pertain to the products or services requested, and I don't see where the highest-ranked proposal was non-responsive. I, I can't find a way to get to say that, in my mind, that we need to go back out and redo this proposal. So, no, I can't, I can't find merit to make that decision, and I'm sorry for that. I guess I'm not sorry, because, you know, we've got two great providers, that, two great proposals. Ultimately, in the end here, I think that we are doing what this board's goal is, is furthering mental health services to the much needed in our community, which is completely underserved in our, in our community. And we understand the financial constraints. So, I mean, with that, I, I'm prepared to support the staff's recommendation because I can't find fault in the process. Further comments? We don't have any comments? I would entertain a motion, if that's appropriate. Trying to make sure I'm making the right motion here, so I'm reading. This is one of those ones where you almost have to make the negative motion to deny the, the protest.
I think we just moved to approve the order that's prepared.
Which, that's why I was trying to make sure the order was, that was the correct way.
Mr. Chaney, please.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not presuming what your motion might be, but if the board were affirming the award, there is a, the Health Human Services with their memo did have a draft board order for the affirmation of the award.
Okay. Then that's what I was just trying to read through to make sure that's, was indeed what that particular order did, because I was going to refer to it by number, and I, that's always dangerous, without reading the actual. So I would move approval of Order 16-02-0909, affirming the award of the contract to Columbia Care.
Second. Further discussion? Commissioner Storson?
Thank you very much. I just want to say some nice things about Whitebird in, in this matter. You know, we, we pride ourselves, I think, in, in Lane County and Eugene as being a caring community, and we've got a, an excellent organization, 45 years of service to the people in our community. And I know that, I know there's a lot of people who literally their lives have been saved by Whitebird, and I also think that there's a, really a groundswell of volunteer support and, and individual financial support for, for Whitebird and what it does. And over the years, I think it was started out as sort of a, you know, university neighborhood type health group, and pretty soon it grew into a mainstream for the city of Eugene, and contracts that the city and the county have, have provided to, to expand the pioneering work that was done. And then really kind of shocked me, as a, as a longtime Eugene resident that Springfield got into the act and started seeing the benefits to their community, and they became big proponents. So I know that some are going to, going to see this as a very narrow decision, and we're bound by, by this, but I think the, the response that I got in terms of both, both bids as being substantially responsive, leads me to the view we should award this to, to Whitebird, or if, if another round of, of going out to putting this out for, for a bid would, would be in the public interest, I'd be willing to, to do that as well, but not to just go ahead and, and award it, so.
Other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Pass is three to one, with Commissioner Farr excused. Couple more items before we recess to our evening meeting at the Deep Woods Event Center. Next is Item 15, Review of Assignments.
Chair Stewart, Commissioners, I have three items to the best of my ability. First, you would like a staff response from Public Works on the Belknap Covered Bridge Project. You want to know the, the status of the project, the timing, the coordination with the community, and lighting concerns. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Secondly, you'd like a report back on Senate Bill 1532. That's the minimum wage bill. You'd like provision of legal assessment as to whether or not it should be considered an unfunded mandate. Is that accurate? And then finally, a report back on industrial corridor UGB code interpretation relating to the county code that applies to the Eugene UGB, and you'd like to have that back in March. At that, you would like to have Bill Close and a Eugene representative present. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Agenda item.
Agenda item, yes. A March agenda item. That is what I have. I will also be checking in on loose horses in the Dorina Lake area, but that didn't make its way onto the assignment list, just a follow-up.
Sounds like you captured them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we don't have an executive session. Is there any other business?
So I would just like to note for tonight's meeting, if... I think he just pocketed us. Pocketed out. I was trying to be nice. I just, for tonight's meeting, if possible, if folks could get together and try and, from staff and from, from county, try and carpool to the site. I'm concerned we're going to have a pretty big turnout. Try and avoid filling the parking lot with staff. So I am going to be at the Fernridge Middle School there in Elmira Parking Lot at 5:00 with my seven-passenger Flex, and the seats folded down. Anyone that wants to ride up, then I'll be leaving there right around 5:00, and maybe we can get a couple other people. So just as many ti, as much ability as we can to try and carpool to get there, I think would be appreciated, because I think the worst thing that we could have happen is people show up at 5 till 6 and can't get a parking space.
So for somebody that was minding the phone there, that was 5:00 at the middle school?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Which is across from the school bus parking lot there on, on Territorial. Okay. Any other business? Okay. Seeing none, then we are in recess until 6:00 P.M.